I'd like to call this regular meeting of the city council to order and ask the clerk to take the role.
(inaudible)
Councilmember Amos.
Present.
Councilmember Ashford.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep. Mayor Protam Archibald.
Here.
Council has before them the minutes of the regular meeting of February 22nd. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as submitted?
So move.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashford. Do I have a second?
Support.
Councilmember Amos. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as submitted signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. We have two presentations. If the clerk would read the first one.
Representative from St. Clair County Community Foundation will present a grant donation totaling $38,500 for projects in the parks for a new playground structure for 19th and Division, playground equipment for Lincoln, and wheelchair swings for Pine Grove and Lakeside Parks if approved.
Mayor Protam, City Council, tonight I have the greatest job in the world. I get to give away some money. Rainey Myers couldn't be here tonight as Rainey's out of town, but I'd like to explain a little bit about this grant. The Community Foundation has awarded this grant to the rec department, and this grant for over $38,000 represents the number-one priority for the next three years for the Community Foundation, and that is community and economic development. And just to give you a little bit of background, I would say that this was a complicated, in-depth grant request that we had to go back to the city rec and ask them to go through the process to prioritize what they were asking for. And I think you should be very proud. They did a wonderful job, and so I'm very pleased to be able to grant this tonight, and then Nancy will spend some time to go into some more details on it. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
Again, we're always so grateful. The Community Foundation has been very supportive of both the city of Port Huron and the Parks and Recreation Department, and I'd just like to thank them again for all their support. As you know, going through the city, some of our equipment is getting a little bit older. With budget constraints, sometimes it's very difficult to replace equipment. Couple of these projects were initiated by the community, though, and as I always say, you know, community working together is huge, and I know Councilmember Amos was there last year when we, the neighborhood came together to paint at 19th and Division. And at that point, we realized that the play structure there is compromised. So we always say, like, people say, "Well, what about my park?" But we tried to find donors that match with what the, and as Mr. Walker said, you know, a lot of our priorities have matched, but we've got to look at parks that go with different donors. So that particular park, we'll be looking at a safe, you know, a new play structure at 19th and Division. At Lincoln Park was another example of community coming together. As you know, we got the Make a Difference grant, and the community came together to come paint there, and we'll be painting again in spring. But they will be also, we don't have a lot of equipment geared towards younger kids, so the grant is going to help us to do equipment for that age group and a couple other things in that part. And then Mr. Freed had brought from his previous city the wheelchair swings, and we're very excited about that because, obviously, we always want opportunities for people of all abilities, and so we're very excited about the opportunity to do two swings in the city of Port Huron. So again, I would just like to thank the Community Foundation and actually the community for bringing these different projects to our attention, and as I always say, great parks make great neighborhoods and great communities. So thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Presentation number two.
Chief Michael Reeves and staff will provide an update on the code enforcement unit.
I've got the staff here, and tonight we'll have our presentation of the annual Code Enforcement Unit's work for 2015. I know we've talked about this at a number of different council meetings off and on, and I've told you that this presentation's been coming. We're going to give you a little glimpse of the year in review. If you have in-depth questions in regards to some of the things we go over, we're available after the meeting or during the week. If you want to get ahold of us, we'll be happy to sit down with you and explain it. Okay? Harris?
All right. City Mayor Freed, Mayor Protam Archibald, and council members, I'll try to be as brief as possible. I know you have a lot on the agenda tonight, but our goals for 2015, we wanted to create a collections program, reduce the need for tickets and grass cuts, increase blight awareness, reach out to community groups, which we did too. We wanted to increase calls by the city of Port Huron staff, which dropped, actually, from 2% to 1%, but I don't think it's from lack of trying. A lot of times officers or DPW or what have you call in complaints, and we already have them in the system that we found them already, so I don't think it's any fault of their own. So just a quick review. We updated the ordinances in 2013 in December. We created this new fix-it ticket, which gave people time to correct and would waive the fine completely if they did so. And that was around January of 2014. There's also a straight ticket option, too, where we can just issue a straight ticket without giving them time to correct. We do that about 7% of the time, 5%, 7%. It streamlines the process for repeat offenders. That's why we use it. And then they would proceed to an administrative hearings bureau, and they could talk with a hearing officer about that case, and if they didn't like what they received from the hearings officer at the very end, then they're allowed to take it to circuit court. So there's a due process built into there. So the fines have stayed the same, 50, 100, 200, depending on the offense, and state of Michigan requires that we collect $10 for each violation if they get to the level of the administrative hearings bureau, so we do do that. Hearing officers, we have Mr. Standhurst that's here today supporting us. We have John Lipsey as well. They're both licensed Michigan attorneys that have been specially trained to act as a magistrate or a judge. They hold cases twice a month in the city building in room 101, and they listen to testimony and create an order of finding based on what they hear. They have the ability to dismiss the matter, to give more time to the residents, to reduce or keep the same or increase the fine up to $10,000, actually. So I left 2014 on the screens just as a comparison, but we had 2172 complaints this year. It's a 13% decrease from last year. We issued just under 1,900 tickets, which is 16% decrease from last year, and we had just as many employees working just as hard as we did in 2014. So to me, that tells me that people are paying attention. People are more cognizant of blight and trying to abide by it. We had a 19% decrease in the AHB cases. We had a few more hearings, you know, like maybe 40 more hearings, where people would come back multiple times, just giving people a chance to correct their own problems. No one had appealed in circuit court this year, but we have the ability to bring the orders to a circuit court judge and ask them to help us when we don't get the problem solved. You might recognize this picture because you saw it last year, too. In 2014, we had to clean it up and spend taxpayers' money to do that, and the residents just junked the entire property again with more debris in 2015. So we came in and cleaned it up again this year, but luckily, the land contract holder got involved, and those people no longer live there. And they put a new gravel in and sod and restored the grass that was destroyed from all the blight, so, you know, it's really a nice-looking house, so it was a shame it ever looked that way. Okay, so who initiated the complaints? 1% of the time, it was city staff; 25% of the time, citizens called in to us; and then 74% of the time, we initiated the calls. So as you see, it's pretty relative to last year. So we had 2,172 complaints, like I said. 86% of the time, we issued a ticket, because that's what the program is based on, issuing these fix-it tickets. 5% of the time, we didn't issue a ticket. Perhaps they cleaned it up while we were sitting outside, which sometimes happens, or we're referring to a grant program, and we don't ticket graffiti victims right away because they are a victim. And county-owned property, I mean, we just give them a call or an email, and they correct the situation right away with tax foreclosure properties. 7% of the time, citizens called in, and it just was substantiated by us, and it doesn't mean there wasn't a violation, but it just wasn't there when we got there. And then 1% of the time, maybe a new owner owned it and we closed it out, or we forwarded it to planning department, and then we had another 1% that's just open and still granting them more time to comply. So out of those tickets we issued, those 1,900 almost tickets we issued, 80% of the time, people complied on their own. They get the ticket in the mail, and they did what we asked them to do, so we're really proud of that number. 15 more percent of people went to the administrative hearings bureau, and out of that 15%, those are the ones that we may have ordered a grass cut or ordered a cleanup, and so we're counting that as complied. We may have complied for them, but, so that's 95% of the problem is solved regarding the tickets we issued, which is awesome. Another 4% are still in progress. We're still giving them time to complete. And then another 1% are fined, but the case is not resolved, and it's because we can't spend taxpayers' money to replace a roof or to paint the house for them, so what do we do now? So we call those the list of the lost, and I threw random pictures in here of different houses that have been improved because we got involved this year, so there's one of them up there. But sometimes we take them back through the administrative hearings bureau again. We issue them a new ticket. Maybe there's a change in ownership that'll help us out, or maybe they can see that we mean business and we're not going to go away, so sometimes that works. Sometimes we take them to circuit court, like we showed you on that 2,500 block of Connor Street, and we work to connect with community development or different volunteer groups that may have not been available the first time around. We had a situation at 13th and White where we ran into an elderly female that was living in unsafe conditions this year, and we contacted Department of Human Services, and they were very helpful, showed us how to go about getting a guardian for her, and the house is now demoed because it was just not savable. And she has safe housing, and representative from the public guardians office. And now that we went through that and saw how that worked, we knew we had another elderly citizen that lived at 15th and Bancroft, same kind of deal, living with a hole in the roof. So we petitioned in probate court to get them a guardian, and it was granted, and we're working through that right now. So we're really thinking out of the box to try to solve some of these problems. You may have remembered this house at the cornerstone in Garfield, a vehicle hit it seven years ago, and it's looked like that for seven years. The city's tried every other year, so bringing the homeowner back to court, but finally, with the help of the planning department and corporate counsel, the house looks nice, and they replaced the siding, and it's finally can be an old problem we forget about now. So I left the total violations up there. So we wrote about 1,800, 1,900 tickets, but some of the tickets have multiple violations. So basically, this is what blight is. 45% of the time, it's open storage. Most of the time, it's junk and debris. We addressed 368 vehicles out there that were inoperable or unplated. We only had to tow two, which is pretty remarkable. The rest were towed by landlords or put in garages or sold, sometimes moved to different locations, but we do catch on to that. 34% of the time, it was landscape, grass-type issues. 20% of the time, it's paint or porches. In our National Property Maintenance Code, there's fences, garages, and stuff like that. Less than 1% of the time, it's an inhabitable structure or commercial property. So if that's what blight is, this is what blight is not, and I put that up here just because we get a lot of complaints, and I always feel like, "That's not us." So the planning department deals with building codes, permits, the electrical, plumbing, rental inspectors, zoning complaints that are popular, like parking on the front lawn or in your backyard, temporary structures like those plastic garages people put up that are against the ordinance, sign violations. And then the right-of-way inspector through DPW, they handle all the sidewalk, sidewalk repair, snow on sidewalks, trash that's either put out too early or too much. So we cut grass 136 times in 2015, which seems like way too much, but it was 275 in 2013, so our numbers have went drastically down. We spent about $15,000 doing those grass cuts and these 13 cleanups, but we've recouped all that money, not only for 2015, but also 14 and 13, through owners paying or single lot assessments, which we brought in front of you. Total fines, when we pulled all the data out of BSNA, our computer system that we're working with, it gave us a number that wasn't right, so we actually had to take each invoice and each court order and put it on Excel spreadsheet to get the right amount. So it was about $50,000 in fines last year, and in 2014, I had told you it was about $30,000, and we went back and recalculated and found it was actually 51. So that was about our average fine amount for 14 and 15. We actually worked hard on this collection process as being part of our goals, and all of those fines have been paid by the owner or through single lot assessment. The $10,000 and the, so about the $13,000 from 14 and 15 that hadn't been paid was because we brought the single lot assessments to you in one chunk in 2015, and when we waited that long, property had changed hands with new owners, and we can't go after a new owner for an old owner problem. So we went to a private collector, and we turned over $13,000 in debt to them. It cost us about $1,200 to open the case files and court files against these people, and we've only received $925 back, but the program is in its infancy. It's only been about six months. We still have to track people down and look to see if we can garnish wages and what we can do about that. This picture here is the back and the front of the same house. There's two dead trees, and it's kind of hard to tell, but there's a ladder going from the base of the middle of the dead tree up to the top of the other tree, and neighbors had complained on that, and the owners left town, so we went in and cleaned it up and received a lot of happy compliments from neighbors on that. What's atrocity right there. And we modeled ourselves originally after Detroit, some of the wonderful things that they were doing, being proactive with their blight problem, and copied a lot of what they put on their website. And it's funny because after, at the end of 2014, they were right where we were as far as, okay, we fined a bunch of people, we've paid a bunch of money to collect or to cut grass and clean up, but what do we do now? So they called us, which I thought was awesome. How are you getting your money? How are you putting bite into the program so it's working? So we told them, "We're sending people last chance letters, giving people an ability to pay. We're working with corporate counsel." Instead of us sending a letter to a bank or to another lawyer, sometimes lawyer to lawyer, they can see that we mean business and we're not going to go away, and then the single lot assessment and the private collection efforts that I talked to you about. We referred 21 citizens to community development. They sent out more paint vouchers than they ever had this year, and 61% were redeemed, which is their highest amount ever redeemed. We reached out to five churches and volunteer groups to help citizens. We gave four presentations to different community programs. We volunteered on Make a Difference Day and cleaned up the 2,100 block of St. Clair and the 700 block of 15th Street for a couple elderly neighbors who weren't able to do so themselves. And DPW and Forestry helped us haul away the debris. As far as cooperation, this year's really been incredible for us, and kudos to Mr. Freed on moving us from the fourth floor to the third floor. Now we're with the planning department, and we are just working completely in conjunction with one another. Instead of sending an email and waiting a few days for a response, I mean, you're face-to-face asking, "What's going on with this house? What are you guys doing about this? How can we help you?" So that's been wonderful, and David Haynes has been just a joy to work with. He's been wonderful, so, big help. Community development, it's been a huge nexus with the $1 million blight grant that we received, and as far as us telling them the problems we're having, what we're seeing in the neighborhoods, and they're, you know, swooping in and saving the day and taking some of these terrible houses down. It's been a real asset to have, you know, my connections with the police department and being able to find people or being able to, you know, send an email out to 50 officers and maybe getting a problem solved that way, or having them in turn be the eyes and ears when they're out in these houses or in these backyards and seeing things. Corporate counsel, I mean, when we have a case that's list of the lost cases where we don't know what to do next, corporate counsel's been incredible on helping solve the issues for us. Public guardians office and probate court this year, I mean, we've only brought two cases to them, but they said, "Yeah, you know, we'll totally step in and help," which has been a great help this year. Local businesses have been great. Mr. Eckert owns South River Service Company. You know, it looked like a third-world country up there from the waterfront, and I couldn't get on a boat to take a picture from that angle, but it's almost all completed on the sides, and it looks so much better now. I know the building's for sale. He's put a lot of money into it. Done Paper, there was a negative talkback comment about it, so we contacted them and said, "Hey, your waterfront view isn't looking so great." And we gave them a couple landscaping comments, and, you know, they painted over graffiti with a different color paint on their fence, and they came back and said, you know, "Not only will we fix this, but, you know, we're going to tackle eight other things that we think don't look completely wonderful because we want to be good neighbors and we want to stay in this community." So they were great. John's towing had an abandoned building that collapsed in the back of their property and some vehicle parts and tree branches, and it was looking pretty bad back there, and they came in when we contacted them and extended their parking lot dramatically and hauled all that brush out of there, so they were great as well. So we've had many compliments, mostly from neighbors and the people that have to live next door to these homes and businesses. We've handled many neighborhood problems, you know, maybe it just starts with blight or there's a little bit of blight, but if, you know, if I can get my hands on it, we're thinking out of the box. I filled out eviction papers this year for a guy who couldn't quite figure out how it works, so, you know, I'm learning myself and doing different things. There's an improved look, I hope you've noticed. We sure have. We've been working hard. Our 2016 goals, we want to increase the education of our new tenants and homebuyers in the city. We want to improve on our ordinance language and enhance the marketability of the neighborhoods, and that's going to be through greater collaboration with the planning department, and we're really excited about the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't know if I have any questions, but I have a few comments. Mayor Protam? First of all, I'd like to congratulate you and your staff and also our two attorneys over there. And I think, you know what, you've actually shown the ability to think outside the box, and I like the fact that you even went the extra mile to help in the guardianship of people that can't help themselves. And actually, I was a witness of you, Officer McKeon, when she was out there helping another lady, and I think also Councilmember Harris. You know, how we do this, we just don't come here and talk about it, but we take part, an active part, in making that difference, and that's what you've done, and you just, you know, make the police department look so good. A lot of you guys that just put yourself out there first and show us by example what you can do. And I also like to mention that one key factor for me in your data that you gave me is when we had the, who initiated the complaints, and I think a win for me when I see this, like, the citizens are at 25%, I would like to see that, a little bit more ownership there, you know, to increase that number, because when you get to them, that's like buy-in, you know, and that's a win-win for us all. And the inspectors there at 74%, and that's their job, that's what they're supposed to do, but we need to meet them halfway or either go all the way, you know, and try to help with that. And the collaboration efforts are just phenomenal, you know, with the planning director, and you are, you'd be commended, and I'll just keep up the good work. Thank you so much.
The two houses with the guardians, were they rentals or were they owner-occupied homes?
Owner-occupied, deceased former owners.
I was just curious.
Just a comment, you know, we had a little discussion about it a couple weeks ago. We had at our goal session, and, you know, like I say, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, and it still seems that there's a little discretionary enforcement out there, or what I say, or not enforcement, I think when it gets right down to enforcement, it's the enforcement's there, but I think there's different types of views of what person that looks at that house on Erie Street and says it's a blight issue and the other one that says it's don't, and I guess that is my only really issue. The other one I had is the fact that it was, you kind of said it was in a positive thing, but the 61% who were accepting the paint and using it, and I was, I had that marked on my agenda. I was kind of disappointed that we got 39% of people that don't take something for nothing. That really kind of disappointed me. I was sitting there doing the numbers today, and you got 39% of the people who were offered free paint, and they aren't taking advantage of it.
And it's usually worse.
So what, what did you do in that case if you offer somebody over on, say, Carlton Street, five gallons of paint to fix up their house? They don't pick up the paint, they don't do their house. Do you go back through the process?
Yes.
Sad.
Yeah, it is. If they just do one side of their house right, maybe they could do the front, the sheer, the sides, and some people have trouble paying for things. That's the only way to get the problem solved.
And what you're seeing now is a sustainment of a process that started three years ago. We grew it out of nothing with all these people's assistance, and now you've seen three years' worth of progress, and people are starting, yes, those cases, the people always, those little ones will stick out like a sore thumb, but you see the results of the 95% of the other ones that really make a difference in the city. I think what I'm most excited about is what we have planned going forward. This year, there's some exciting stuff, and we're sitting down talking right now with the landlords association and working collaboratively together to solve a couple issues. I think you're going to see some things come out of planning inspections and policing code enforcement here within the next three months or so that might be a real game changer in terms of dealing with problems in the neighborhoods. So I guess I can't thank Marcy enough and her staff, Todd, David, that they do a phenomenal job. They don't get a lot of thank yous. I've listened to many of the phone calls and many people that call just screaming, and after a while, it's like water off a duck's back, but I try to explain to them that there is a process and that they can go through this process. They're here to help. I want to make sure that everybody understands that. 95% of the time, you can walk away from this complaint just by taking care of the problem, and it goes away. There's no fine, there's nothing else involved. So it's really incumbent upon the people that have the problem to solve it. Excellent job.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item or any other item under the city's jurisdiction, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have four minutes.
My name's Mark Peltier. My address, 2840 Monticello. I've been in front of the council before regarding an unfounded issue with my property and my neighbors that was resolved thanks to the help from a couple of you guys up there, and I appreciate that. I commend your having Marcy run that. I've known Marcy for a very, very long time, and it's great to see her as a lieutenant and in charge of code enforcement, and she's a very fair and honest individual. Couldn't have chose better for that. On another note, I had the opportunity to go to the waterfront. In the midst of all this wonderful thing that you guys are trying to accomplish with residences that sit back from our number-one attraction for visitors is the waterfront. I spent some time on the waterfront recently and found that the blight actually is in our waterfront. I challenge anybody right now with normal walkwear to walk down the Kiefer Park that's on just north of us. I guarantee you, you're not going to make it to the sidewalk without scraping your shoes off. If you look down, there's not one square inch that's not full of goose excrement. If you use the handrail, I certainly hope that you have hand sanitizer or some way to fix a cut from all the scratches and the burns on the handrail. I actually heard a young mother yell at their kid for touching the handrail up by the river. I understand the need for blight ordinance. I understand the need that we've got to clean up the city, but when our number-one attraction for visitors is, "Come on down, come on down, stay at the hotel, go and eat, just don't walk on the grass." I think somehow we've got to match up what we're doing. I understand different departments, and I understand you're dealing with geese, but, you know, I challenge you guys, take a walk down there tonight. I also challenge you, because I spend a lot of time on the water, go down to any of the boat launches on any given day. People have to bring extra footwear just to get on the dock to launch their boat and switch out before they get in the boat. We have our own problem just on public perception, and I think it's great that you guys are going after citizens for not taking care of their own property, but, you know, when I bring people in here, I don't like taking them down to the number-one visitor attraction because I know how filthy it is. I think somehow we've got to take that into account so that, you know, I can be a little bit more proud, or when my family comes over from other parts of the state, they don't have this. We're used to it, but they want to come down here and enjoy it, and I don't want to have the embarrassment of trying to explain away, "Well, yeah, we've got geese here and there's poop all over the place. You can't walk down there, so, you know, look at it from here, don't get out of your car." I think we can do a better job. You know, unfortunately, I don't know what the solution is because it's all departmentalized, and I get it, but if we're really trying to get extra money in and tourism in and stuff like that, we have to start right out here. It's just my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council tonight? Seeing no one, sorry, go ahead.
Scott Farquhar, 1018 Varney Street. You aren't going to get away without me, you knew that. First of all, I'd like to commend the police chief and the other law enforcements. Pub crawl looked like it was a great success. I didn't hear through the grapevine of any real, any problems or whatever, there was definitely a police presence. I'd also like to thank the McMorn Authority Board or whoever, the tent they put up, that was a great success. Makes up a little bit for Chili Fest. I didn't know he was going to bring up the goose thing, you're going to talk about some repavements of some parking lots later on tonight and unfortunately, because of the weather, I didn't come in here, maybe it's on the agenda already, but this is another 25-year problem that's been in the city of Port Huron. I challenge anyone to take their own personal car, not a city-owned car, and drive across the boat launch on Riverside Drive at 15 miles an hour and you will do damage to the front end of your car. That has been that way for 25 years and gets worse every year. I am a boater, I pay $25 a year to use the boat launches. I believe it was two years ago, they extended it and did a very nice job, other than the goose poop, you know, Mr. Pyant does a great job and his crew to take care of it, but that should be somewhere on the list that needs to be addressed. It doesn't have to be pavement. Many of the boat launches in St. Clair County, most of the DNR ones are gravel. It doesn't have to be pavement, it just has to be flat. Possibly, and I know theft would be a concern, but some of the other surrounding areas, they put simple brooms down there. What's the cost of a broom? 25 bucks if we end up replacing it three times? The guys that are using those boat launches, me for one, I would take the broom, dip it in the water so I could get into my boat without have to tiptoe through or end up with an argument with somebody. The other thing I'll just throw out again, and it's summertime and my friends are out there holding signs again, there's got to be something we can do. I mean, the gentleman that's routinely on the corner of 10th and Lapeer, I was at one of the local, I was at Buff Car Wash the other day, getting my car washed, two hours before he was standing out there holding a sign, he was hungry, he was so drunk on his bicycle that he ran in the back of the owner Mike's truck parked in his own parking lot. There's got to be, there's got to be something we can do. Police have a lot on their mind, hassle them. I mean, I don't, like I said, I know there's a vagrance law, but where do you draw the line? They're doing a fine job, but we got to do something to get rid of them. I don't know what it is, but it looks terrible and they seem to know where to hit. I mean, Sunday morning, going to Mass Sunday morning, there you're standing out there holding a sign and I see these 60, 70, 80-year-old people who are struggling themselves handing this kid money because, you know, and it's just not right. The one on 94, we could charge him for the grass, he's worn out the grass, there's a spot worn out there. So, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Alan Jawett, my residence address is 708 17th Street, Alan Jawett, Fino Home at 17th and Lapeer. Council, or City Manager Freed. Ken Harris, as a neighbor of mine and I have spent, I probably see him daily walking, I try to catch him once a week to give my frustrations about several things in our neighborhood. The biggest thing that's really bothered me, and I counted on my way here tonight from 10th Street to 17th Street, I counted 32 of those yellow newspapers they've just thrown in the front yard. There's multiple ones on some of the homes. I mean, you drive down the pier and I'm serious, from 10th to 17th, I counted 32 of them and they've been there for a good week. I think, you know, the people that if you're going to throw these things out there in the front yard and the last week is still there, why you still keep throwing them? And I think they should be responsible to clean that mess up. I mean, they're everywhere, multiple ones. There's a couple of homes on Lapeer Avenue, I've talked to Ken Harris about them, Ken knows the addresses, we've spoke at great lengths about it. I know Chief Reeves certainly wouldn't, you would not live next door to these homes and I certainly hope, and I've complained, and Ken Harris and I have physically looked at these homes, noting the addresses, that totally unacceptable living. And for probably four years, the one address I've complained on at least twice a year and it looks today just like it did four years ago. Correct? Multiple, there's several cars in our neighborhood that unlicensed parked in driveway, there's, I think there's one house that's got room for one drive, or one car in the driveway. I think they have three in there. And two of them are unlicensed. You know, I just spent two and a half million dollars on my corner and I take pride in my neighborhood. We clean it up. I have one full-time staff, Monday through Friday, that cleans a six-block area up of our neighborhood. Every day, he probably comes back with three full bags of garbage and I have no problem doing that. I'm proud of my neighborhood, I'm going to take care of my neighborhood, but to see the garbage that these shoppers or whatever the newspaper is they're throwing, I think they should be responsible to clean up their mess too. You know, to me, that's massive blight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address council? Seeing no one, I'll declare public comment period closed and we will move on to the consent Do you have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris, the clerk will take the role.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
Archibald.
Yes. Items adopted under the consent agenda include receiving file notification that Douglas J. Richard has been appointed by the mayor in the Traffic Study Committee with a term to expire March 14, 2018. Scheduling a public hearing for March 28, 2016 to hear input and comments from citizens on a proposed Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant application for a Lakeside Park picnic shelter. Scheduling a public hearing for March 28, 2016 to hear input and comments from citizens on proposed Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant application for Pine Grove Park reservations, renovations. Approving the performance resolution with the Michigan Department of Transportation for right-of-way permit to construct, operate, use, and/or maintain utility or other facilities or to conduct other activities on, over, and under state highway right-of-way at various locations within and adjacent to its corporate limits. Confirming and approving single lot special assessments for special trash pickup in the right-of-way. Confirming and approving single lot special assessments for fines assessments and/or the cost of removing blight, blighting factors and/or causes of blight as well as the abatement of nuisances. Correcting the single lot assessment amount for two previously declared single lot assessments for fines assessments and/or the cost of removing blighting factors and/or causes of blight as well as the abatement of nuisances. That brings us to, from the city manager, if the clerk would read the first item.
Accepting the bid from Kevin Longcare in the amount of $2,987 per application for lawn maintenance and weed control of various city-owned parks and properties.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Amos, any discussion? The clerk will take the role.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
Archibald.
Yes. Motion carries from the city manager, number two.
Accepting the bid from Lockston Fence in the amount of $6,592.18 for replacement of the fence on the south and west side of Sandboard Fall Field with 50% paid for by grant funding from MMRMA.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Harris, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, any discussion? The clerk will take the role.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
Archibald.
Yes. Motion carries from the city manager, number three.
Accepting the bid from AIS in the amount of $80,566 for the purchase of a backhoe loader for the use by forestry parks and cemetery divisions.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, any discussion?
Mayor Protem, can we explain the need of this particular item?
Mayor Protem, if I may, the current, this will be placing a 1995 backhoe that has over 8,000 hours on it. It's a special ET design, as Nancy can speak to, that will fit between the tombstones in the cemetery, where it'll be heavily used there. So it's replacing a 1995 backhoe. Estimated lifespan between 20 and 25 years of replacement.
Councilmember Harris.
Is this the same backhoe we discussed about six months ago and pushed it back?
No.
I don't think so.
No.
And I guess my other, my only other comment, looking at this and the expenditure with this $80,000 or $84,000 and only having two bids, I really, it's kind of a problem and stuff. And I was looking at our Michigan Municipal League thing that we get here for RFPs and they have a joint program now under the Michigan Municipal League to attract more bidders and things like that. And we can purchase these type of things or request for proposals through the Michigan Municipal League and instead of getting two bids, we might get 10 bids or something like that. I just, I just don't think we're getting enough ride here or to...
I'll have, sorry, Ben, speak to the bidding process for you.
I can actually explain that. This is, like we said, a very particular item. It is a four-wheel steer which allows you to drive in between these headstones and so it's a very tight area in the cemetery, you have a lot of old headstones, some of these are very big, very old, you cannot move them, if you do, you destroy them. So it has to be a very turn, tight turning radius machine to get in between. We put out the bid multiple times and there's only like one or two companies that make this. So that's why it's, you're not going to see a lot of bids on it.
Mayor Protem?
And we only have one, this is one?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, I can, we only have one in the forestry and parks division. We do have a backhoe in the DPW, but it's much larger and can't be used for the same application.
Right.
So, just want to clarify that.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Lewandowski.
What are they going to do with the old backhoe?
We'll auction it off.
The clerk will take the role, please.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
Archibald.
Yes. Motion carries from the city manager, number four, please.
Accepting the bid from Ram Construction Services in the amount of $103,530 for the MOC North Parking Lot Restructuring Project.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, any discussion?
Mayor Protem, just briefly explain the project, this is for the North MOC Parking Lot. It uses like a rubber polymer resealant, it needs to be done as it's currently leaking into the underground facilities, the parking garage as well as, we also have the evidence room there. We use rubber blades now to protect it to make it last longer, that was a change we made a couple of years ago. Previously, this cost us about $65,000 the last time it was done there, about, the reason for the additional cost as well is they'll be repairing a large retaining wall on our handicap ramp into the building that is collapsing as well, and so that's also in here.
Mayor Protem, City Manager Freed, when was the last time we did work on this? How long's this?
When was the last time, was it six or seven years ago? Six years ago.
That's the longevity of this project?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
We have, if I could, we just, we add, we've been using rubber blades now, that's a change we made a year ago, two years ago, started using rubber blades, which is easier on the polymer surface, it should make, it should last longer this time.
So, okay, so we've just been band-aiding?
Yeah, it needs to be done.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Why do they use a polymer surface on it instead of just regular asphalt?
Chair, Councilman, Mayor Protem, Mr. Freed, the answer to that is the polymer is needed because this is a structural surface and it doesn't need, asphalt wouldn't provide the tension that is required for this, plus it would be too heavy. In this case, we've got, it's a surface that provides a structural component to this parking lot that asphalt would not.
Any further questions?
This was something previous engineer Bob Clegg had brought up to us, gosh, I want to say it was in 12 and 14, and we had the discussion, we, he was supposed to be done, we thought about doing it last year and it's one of those things we thought, well, can we hold out one more year? So it was held off for a year. Because I just remember walking with Bob Clegg thinking, does this really need to be done? So, we did hold off as long as we could.
Okay, yes.
I guess, Kears, what did they use when the building was built? I can't imagine they had polymer surfaces back, they may have, I don't know, I'm just guessing.
Oh, because we're alive.
It must have lasted a long time, it seems like, I don't remember, replaced them every six or seven years.
Concrete, I believe, yeah.
So why don't we do it in concrete again if it lasts longer?
Because it's concrete out there now, you'd have to take it all up and redo it, which would cost...
Oh, seriously? That's just a coating.
I have one question, you mentioned, last time was six years, you anticipate a longer timeframe now, can you give us an estimate of what, I mean, what is longer? A year, six months, three years?
We're using the rubber blades, we just don't know, but the rubber blades have been a dramatic improvement by using the application of the steel blades, so hopefully a couple of years longer.
Thank you, any other questions?
Just one more to follow up on that. What would the cost of putting concrete in there cost?
I couldn't imagine.
I'm just curious if we're replacing it every six to five, six years at a hundred grand bees?
It'd be, the issue with the concrete down, there'd be a structural component as well. Did the cabling, I believe there's cableings inside the concretes as well which have to be replaced. The building was built on a concrete cabling system and that would have to be taken into consideration as well, so I would assume astronomical.
Well, it's astronomical to you, I guess?
I, more than 65. I have no idea, literally no idea, till we bid it.
I guess I would want to know that answer before I'm falling for a hundred grand every six years.
I was going to ask, what's the urgency of this project?
There's currently water leaking into our evidence room and leaking into the underground facilities. There's also steel cabling in the piling system as well that water's leaching into, so this will cost more money in the future.
Not only more money, but it's a safety issue.
Yes, it is.
Be wise, if, excuse me, if we could, to maybe get that answer along the way, I'll probably vote to approve this, but to get that kind of an answer, it was asked by Councilman Lewandowski, it just seems like over the years, there's been some maintenance and if we could done with some of the maintenance, it doesn't look like it's a whole bunch better and, you know, I've often felt that we should build a case for maybe a new view of this location. And I think that's material we can gather along the way and maybe find ourselves looking in that direction, so, if we could, please.
Mayor Protem, yeah, and I also agree with him, but I think I don't, as a council member, I don't like to compromise safety issues, safety first.
Thank you, anything further?
Just say, I don't think it's a major safety issue at this point, they haven't closed it off, I mean, nobody's going to fall through there anytime today, it's just a coating that's going on top of the concrete that's over top of there, so I'm going to go no on until we have an answer as to what the replacement cost would be on it.
That's your prerogative.
Mayor Protem, I could just add, our largest concern is compromising the evidence room with water.
Okay, thank you. The clerk will take the role.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Amos.
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
No.
Mayor Protem.
Archibald.
Yes. Motion carries from the city manager number five.
Accepting the bid from Murray Underground Systems Incorporated in the amount of eight hundred fifty-eight thousand eight hundred eighty dollars and twenty-five cents for the Beer Street and Michigan Street Water Main and Street Reconstruction Project.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford, any discussion?
I would say so. Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Ashford!
Yeah, can we have an explanation behind this? Please, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
City council, Councilman Ashford.
Uh huh.
Mr. Freed, this particular project is part of our rehabilitation for this particular road system, which is also tied into an MDOT project for the reconstruction of Glenwood, which is occurring in this next, well, it's actually going to bid now through MDOT, and we're looking to start construction later this year, or earlier than, rather than later, because this is also tied to the reuse of the Y property, the development of the property for the condominiums by Mr. Wolfson. And these projects, the realignment of the Water Main and the Beer Street and Michigan Street themselves tie into Glenwood, and this particular project is part of that whole. It's not, this project is not including MDOT because that's being bid separately, however, they're part of the same project.
Okay, are they putting in any money?
I'm sorry?
Are they, MDOT giving us any money?
Yes, ma'am.
How much are they giving?
Well, they're not, ma'am, they're not giving us money for this project, they gave us money for the Glenwood project, of which this is tied to.
Okay, so how much did they give us for the Glenwood?
It's going to be about three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Mayor Protem, if I could, real quickly, two things I want to note. One, this is planned in the CIP years in advance, so this has been in the CIP for probably more than five years. So although beneficial to the YMCA property, that's not what induced this project. Moreover, Lenny, could you explain the full scope of work for this type of price tag? It's everything, street, water, sewer, everything like that?
Yes, I can, I'm not sure what your question is, I'm sorry.
What's the full scope of the work?
The scope of work is the realignment of the Water Main Sewer, Storm Sewer, and the Sanitary Sewer. And we have to leave connections for the development of the Y property, so that they can develop and have connections for water and sewer and storm. And we're rebuilding the roads at the same time.
Okay, so if I could put this in some kind of package, so we need to make preparation for this area in order to have the economic development take place?
Well, ma'am, this is part of the pavement management program that the city has had for many years, in which it's now the turn for this particular roadway, and it just so happens, we're building this roadway, Michigan Beer's and Glenwood, as part of the annual, we do work every year on new streets that have to be rebuilt, because these streets are essentially falling apart, and the utilities need to be upgraded. And it just so happens that this particular project is adjacent to the Y site, which is part of the development that you're aware of. And we have to have this done prior to the completion of the development at the Y site.
That was my point. And is this budgeted item?
Yes. Mayor Protem, if I could, it is, it is a budgeted point. It is a budget item. It's been planned years, and it's, I think, to hit on your, I'm glad you brought it up. We took the opportunity, so this project has been the work for years. And when sitting down for the design phase, both with MDOT for the Glenwood project, which is a separate task force funding project that'll be coming to you, probably, MDOT's bidding out, so it'll come for award, but MDOT's paying for it. These projects were well in advance, but we thought, well, since we own the YMCA property, and since, you know, whether these condos take off or not, we need to make that site conducive for development. And so I directed Lenny and the engineering team during the design phases of this to allow for stubbing of water and sewer mains, so that in the future, we don't have to go back and dig up a brand-new road and dig up a brand-new water and sewer main to stub it and make preparations for possible development at the Y. So these projects were planned well in advance, but during the design phase, we thought, well, since we're looking at future development here, now's the time to, you know, put a stub in, put a curb cut in where we need it. So whether or not the YMCA condos come to fruition or not, we are hopeful and confident they will, it, it does not direct this project, although this project will be beneficial to it.
Yeah, so this would have to be in place.
Yeah, he's, Lenny's speaking to the, we tried bidding this project and awarding it in early spring, so that we can get this project underway and into, and a certain level of completion by July or August. So if the condos do get built this year, we won't have conflicting construction schedules.
Oh, okay.
And that was our concern.
All right. Councilmember Lewandowski?
I guess I have a couple of concerns about this. I don't have an issue with doing the road if that needs to be done, but I don't want to pay for it until the Wolfson project is a hundred percent go either, because that could limit your development in the future if they got to come in and tear all that stuff back up, if somebody decides they want to build something different there at that point. The other concern I have is if you're going to do all these roads right before he starts all that construction project, you're going to tear the roads right back up with all the equipment coming down.
We have thought about that. So let me, let me be very clear. This project was, has been planned years ago, and has been budgeted years ago. We applied for the MDOT funding more than two years ago. Bob Wolfson didn't come into the picture until November of, just a few months, it was stipulated. And since that time, the city purchased the YMCA building, knocked it down, assumed the property. It would only be appropriate for us, when we're doing the design for these upgrades, to factor in potential future development for that Y site, to make it more marketable, to make it more conducive for development. So Councilman Ruiz is correct, this is not specifically towards condos, this is for any development that would need utilities. We will be capable of holding that there.
If there's any possible way that we make sure that the timing of this isn't, so that we have some of the work done, finished, completed, and as Councilman Lewandowski talked about, having machines going over there, that there's safeguards, because that's just egg in the face.
Yeah, we, our goal is to get the underground, the water and sewer work constructed, completed, before any work that the YMCA site does. That does not mean finished surface work.
Thank you.
But now, do remember that the YMCA site is in three phases.
Yes.
So phase one, between phase one, we will have to finish the project out before phase two and three. But the roads, if you, that infrastructure's more than a hundred years old, it's old water lines, old sewer mains, and that road is, if you drive through there, it's pretty terrible.
Any other questions? I would just like to make a comment or ask, I guess, to, to make sure that at some point we reach out to Mr. Wolfson and talk about a collaboration, that if this is going to go through, he knows what we're about to do, and we know what, what he's looking to do, and that we're not maybe doing something that isn't going to be conducive to what he wants and has to tear up.
Absolutely. We met with, he has contracted out with Tetra Tech, a local engineering firm, and we have essentially kind of had a, we had a conversation in engineering in the boardroom two months ago, a month ago, of what would be the basic fundamental needs you would need, is, you know, water and sewer and all that. And it's, you know, it's utilities of site, for whatever they do inside, that's their business, and that's with any development. So what's nice is, this is not geared towards just specific to the condos, so in case it falls through, there's something else could be there. But it does make our site much more marketable.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Councilmember Lewandowski?
So the hookups that we're putting in there, if another development, say the Wolfson project does fall through, which I'm hoping it doesn't, but say it does, would we have to change anything if, say, another development came through? What was the likelihood of having to go through and tear some of that back up to, for the connections going to that property?
We're simply stubbing a water and sewer main to site, that anybody can use, whoever buys the property. There's no specific design for that site, it's just a simple water and sewer stub there.
Okay, the clerk will take the roll.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Archibald?
Yes. Motion carries from the city manager number six.
Accepting the unit price bid from McKenzie Concrete Incorporated in the estimated amount of ninety-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars for the 2016 annual sidewalk contract.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ruiz, do we have a second?
Support.
Councilmember Amos, any discussion?
Mayor Protem, if I could, just a quick explanation, this is an estimated amount, quantities. We bid out a quantity amount, so we say, we assume somewhere in the ballpark, we're going to do this much concrete throughout the year, and this is the contract we pull in case we have to remove small sections of hazardous sidewalk, say, we have to replace at a blighted home, we do, you know, our code enforcement or our community development goes in to replace concrete, we have that allow, that essentially a contract on hand to replace that. And it's very chopped up, we could do four sections here, half a block here, but we essentially bid on a quantity. This is what we average every year, we do about this much of work, what would that look? So this is not a set in stone price, but it's just an estimated amount that we used to have a contract that we can pull, in case we need some concrete.
Any questions? Councilmember Lewandowski?
What is the quantity that we estimated on?
Councilman Lewandowski, the quantity estimates are one of twenty-eight different unit prices for items, including the rass for ADAs, curb and gutter, adjusting the manhole covers for a structure in the road, preparing four-inch concrete, preparing, preparing eight-inch concrete. We have unit prices for all these different items that we may need as part of the program that Mr. Freed has described.
Okay, if you said manhole, why, if it's a sidewalk, it doesn't confuse it?
It's a concrete contract. We can be, it's used for sidewalk, we use it for various things, sidewalk, curb and gutter, but it's a concrete, general concrete, concrete contract.
But I guess then, how does the contractor, I mean, you've got to have some kind of estimated, you know, linear feet that you're going to do per year or something, I'm just taking a guess, I'm just curious how they come up with a bid for this. Seems higher than, I mean, than it has in past years to me.
Well, the historic use of this has varied, as low as fifty thousand as much as over a hundred and twenty thousand, depending on the needs for that particular year. We have a best estimate here for, for bidding purposes, and we've put out the unit prices generally at square feet, in some cases for removal of concrete as linear feet, but as generally square feet for installation of the items as specified.
And so what do we use, that's what I'm trying to figure out though, how much did we estimate that we're going to be replacing this year?
We estimated approximately ninety-two thousand dollars worth of items.
They're broken down in twenty-eight different categories, between curb and gutter, sidewalk, what size of sidewalk, what depth of sidewalk, and so he has twenty-eight different, can you hand Mr. Lewandowski?
I will, five thousand square feet of concrete, four inch, for example.
That's what I was asking for. Five thousand square. Can you just send me a copy of that?
Yep, absolutely, absolutely, yep.
Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, I just got one comment, you know, I'm looking at the work that we've got, done the last couple of years from, from Conan Construction Company. I mean, they've, they've done a superb job of all the work that I've seen that they've done throughout the city, and it's always difficult to see when you're getting a quality job to, to go with somebody different, but McKenzie's got a good background too, but, but I'm still prepared to see maybe a little difference. But Conan just did such a great job, and, and we're talking a few hundred dollars, but I will vote yes for McKenzie.
Any other questions? The clerk will take the roll.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Archibald?
Yes. From the city manager number seven.
Accepting the bid from TSP Services Incorporated in the amount of four hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred and eighty dollars for the rehabilitation of the Water Street Sanitary Pump Station.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ruiz, do we have a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford, any discussion?
Mayor Protem, I can give you a quick project overview. This is one of our main sanitary pump stations that service the township, one of our main lines. This will be replacing, essentially reconstruction and rehabilitation of the entire site. They will keep the main wet wells, but that's four brand-new forty-horse pumps for that station, control panels above ground, and all the electrical components as well. So similar to what they did near the cemetery, just on a much larger scale. But this is one of those critical pieces that services our, our bulk users.
This is the one at Seventeenth and Water Street, isn't it?
I believe so. Is this one on Seventeenth and Water Street?
Officer Brown's on Water.
Yes, it is Water Street.
You're correct.
Any other questions? Clerk will take the roll.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Archibald?
Yes. We'll move to city manager number eight.
Accepting the bid from Tellto Contracting Incorporated in the amount of four hundred thirty-six thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty cents for the East Quay Street Parking Lot Reconstruction Project.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, any discussion?
Mayor Protem, if I could give a quick overview. This project is coming from legally restricted funding from Hodag, which is a project through HUD. As you remember, if you sent this email in our report about a year ago, we were repaid back, I believe it was a one-point-one million dollar loan over a housing project that was paid back from HUD. That money comes back to us, and we can use those funds for various pioneer home buying programs, but we had earmarked a certain portion of that to support parking lot in the downtown, to support loft living and moderate income housing in the downtown. These funds can only be used for those purposes. Mr. Farquhar mentioned the boat launch at Riverside Drive. Funny you should mention that, Chief and I went out there to look at an ice jam one day, and I almost couldn't get out of the parking lot, so. But these funds are legally restricted and must be used in this specific area, and so we can't use these funds to go do various other general fund projects. It is restricted for that purpose. Of the one-point-one million dollars, four hundred thirty-six thousand, will go to rehabilitate the East Quay Parking Lot to support loft living and moderate housing in our downtown. The remainder of those funds will be put back in, I believe, to the Community Development Office for home buyer opportunity, home, home programs, neighborhood revitalization programs, which he will earmark the rest of that for. So these are restricted dollars for this purpose, we cannot use it for any other reason.
So there's a return on our investment?
Exactly.
Okay, so we got ROI that's clear.
And this, this, this money was, we got paid back on this, it's kind of like manna from heaven, that this, this loan was able to get paid back, it just kind of came out of the blue, and so we're, we wanted, we just wanted to pull our eggs in one basket, we wanted to focus on, parking's been an issue in the downtown. And so, you know, we see a lot of the loft, loft and moderate housing coming into the downtown, which is beneficial, but we also want to make sure that we diversified that make sure that we diversified that HODOG funds for the neighborhood revitalization, home buyer programs. And so there'll be more to come on that. But that's where these dollars are coming from.
So that logic that supports those lofts is acceptable?
Yes.
Is there a preference in terms of the parking for those people? Since they follow, that's the reason we're?
Yeah. The preference for what?
Do they get a site? Do they get a?
They just have access to the parking lot.
Just access.
And I will say that this project is, this parking lot is really, really tricky in location because doing construction in Port Huron is tough. Doing construction in Port Huron downtown in the summertime is really tough. And so our goal is to have this project done in June, well before Boat Week. And if approved tonight, we will do roundtable meetings with all the business owners in that block radius there, because this is a critical piece of infrastructure down there. And so project timing, working with the business community is going to be critically important to make sure that we don't stifle economic progress in the spring and summertime when things are starting to come back alive downtown. So this is one of those projects where it really needs to be done, but there's really no awkward time not to do it. So we are very cognitive of that.
Councilmember Harris.
I'd just like to comment. I think I'd be so much more in favor in this if it included the West Quay parking lot, because it's quite obviously that we're never going to sell that piece of property. And you talk about parking for the lofts and things like that. The West Quay parking lot is prime for the same fix.
Can I respond to that? Councilman Harris, you are absolutely correct. I do know that DTE is currently doing a remediation project down there. And we have had preliminary discussions with DTE about a joint project. When they are done, and they have to remove their equipment, which includes some underground piping and whatnot, we have looked at doing a joint project with them to reconstruct that parking lot, and they seem open to it because they're going to have to do some asphalt replacement where the area they're doing work. And so we want to make sure that, you know, if we're going to, if they're going to do asphalt work and we need to do work, we kind of collaborate and make sure our schedules align so we can get the best price and the best value for our money. And so we have had those conversations with DTE, and I expect that to be the next budget year item.
Good. Thank you.
Assuming there's money.
Any other questions? Councilmember Lewandowski.
From what I've heard, this is going to have some greenage or green space into the side of the parking lot, kind of like over SC4?
No, definitely not. No, I've seen that. No.
Somebody mentioned that.
Absolutely not. It'll use stormwater. We will not be using swaths of grassland, although that's innovative. No, it'll be around the rim of the parking lot, the green belts, the sidewalks. This also, we have the new part of our stormwater permit. We have to put in a separator unit, which will essentially not require grassy areas for runoff. It'll be into the storm.
We're not going to lose any parking spaces?
No, we believe that we can stripe in a manner and reconfigure the islands in a manner that will increase parking to a certain degree. We're not sure how much yet, but we believe we'll increase parking down there.
Haven't you done the design yet?
Do you have the numbers on the parking additions? Do you have the addition of how many additional parking spots we'll gain?
We were working on it in the area of 10 to 12.
10 to 12. Also, on that same note, since you brought it up, I met with the county. They're looking at what they're going to do with the back of the art van building, which may mean more green space and possible parking as well. So they're working on their end as well, but that's not contingent upon us.
Clerk will take the roll.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Archibald?
Yes. Motion carries. That brings us to resolutions. The clerk will read the first item, please.
Authorizing 15 payments.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz, any discussion? Clerk will take the roll.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Archibald?
Yes. Resolution number two.
Approving the supplemental agreement and addendum to the Sanitary Sewer Disposal Service Agreement between the City of Port Huron and the County of St. Clair by its Board of Public Works for the sanitary sewer service to Kimball Township to permit Kimball Township to get USDA financing for sewer improvements.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Harris, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, any discussion?
I've asked our corporate counsel to stop up and breathe in on this.
Good evening. This is an agreement that Kimball Township has asked us to sign, basically for their benefit. It's kind of a pro forma requirement that they have to get a low-interest loan so that they can make some capital improvements to their own sewer system. They are, they use our sanitary sewer plant as well, and they're also a part owner. So there is absolutely no obligation for us in signing this, but it's something that they need. They actually have a closing planned for Wednesday. And they provided us this agreement just in the last week or two. And my partner took out everything out of this agreement that could be construed as requiring us to really do anything. And this was acceptable to the USDA and Kimball Township, so.
Todd, is there any reason why we shouldn't do this?
No, no reason at all. In fact, they're part of our system, so.
Anyone on council have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk will take the roll.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Archibald?
Yes. Resolution number three.
Approving the agreement with the Detroit Edison Company to upgrade all the street lighting located within the city to LED lighting.
Is there a motion?
Support. So moved.
Councilmember Amos, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Harris?
Sorry.
You thought he was a ventriloquist.
Any discussion?
Okay. Mayor Protem and council, my fellow council members, I will not be voting on this. This is my employer, so, you know, I even got a little bit of stock in there, so, but anyway, I don't want to hear anything. So I will refrain from voting on this resolution.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just have a statement. When we talk about clean energy and the environment, I think this is really a great opportunity for the City of Port Huron to be moving in that direction. And so as someone who really is keen on our energy and what that looks like going forward and being innovative, on being the forerunner for our area on what that looks like in environmental justice, I just really am in support of this. I was actually at a Clean Energy and Environmental Justice Academy a few weeks ago, and this is one of my issues that I put down as affecting policy. And so when I've seen this, I really appreciated seeing this on the agenda and hearing that Lenny was already working on it, because that means we're ahead of a number of cities across the nation on this. And so I'll definitely be voting yes in this initiative.
Mayor Protem, if I could, my reasons for recommending this to council are not quite that noble. It's going to save us money. It's going to save us a significant chunk of money, about $300,000 a year. What's remarkable is the cost, not so many years ago, five or six years ago, I looked at this in the previous community, it was $1,200 a fixture. That price has dropped to 400. Their rate structure has become much more beneficial. It's now, there's a financial case to be made for doing this. They believe they have an aggressive strategy. They have several subcontractors working with DTE that they can't get this done in a year. These funds will come out of, you know, we have the funds on hand to do it, but it will save more than $300,000 a year in our general fund. The return on investment is about just slightly over two years. And so the incentives, that $136,000 of incentives I believe DTE is offering, that may not be there next year. And so there is an opportunity cost for waiting. And we desperately need these savings, so that's my reason for recommending it. But it is good for the environment, too.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
What accounts the money coming out of?
It'll be proportionally split between major and local streets construction funds. That's supported as Act 51.
It's a project I support, especially after having my street lamp catch fire last week, which did fix the problem down my street, too. Now, the streetlights don't go out anymore, but. Never knew you could catch one of those on fire. It was interesting.
Councilmember Harris.
Just one comment. You know, I talked to James earlier today, and he hasn't gotten back to me. But I guess my idea, despite the promise of Edison rate increases over the years, which will help anybody that holds Edison stock, I just, there was a comment made in the contract under the master agreement and under the disclaimers. And it says, maybe Lenny can help me out. It says, "Does the requested customer lighting design meet the IESNA recommended practice?" And according to the agreement, we've indicated no. And I don't understand why we would indicate that we don't.
Mayor Protem, if I could, Ken, I appreciate you giving me this question in advance. We will do some research today. DTE, Reggie Brown from DTE explains that the IESNA stands for the Illuminating Engineering Society of North America. And he says that the agreement is replacing light looms with light looms, meaning we have not done some lighting study to make it compliant. You'd have to do a study. DTE doesn't do those. If we were putting all brand-new streetlights in the city and new poles and wiring, you would need to do one of those studies. But we are simply just changing out light fixtures for light fixtures. We're not moving poles. We're not moving cabling. So I appreciate the heads up on that, because that's a, we did a little bit of research on that. So Reggie from DTE helped us out.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Clerk will take the roll.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Archibald?
Yes. Resolution number four.
Approving the amended agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation to fund the city's comprehensive master plan review and update as required by the Blue Water Bridge Plaza Project Mitigation Summary Green Sheet and the Federal Highway Administration through the Records Division.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz, any discussion?
Mayor Protem, I guess we'll do a quick explanation. In addition to our $100,000 a year of our Economic Development Fund that MDOT gives us, there was a green sheet, we call it the Green Sheet for short, that spells out all the various different things they'll fund, including some funding to the Chamber of Commerce. But one of the items on there was a funding allotment of $42,000 to help the City of Port Huron update our master plan. Given all the changes that the plaza has in our community, they felt it would be prudent to help us. So this is us utilizing that $42,000 of MDOT money to help update our master plan, which we will hopefully do a combination of a master plan and a parks and recreation plan as well.
Anyone in council have any questions? Clerk will take the roll.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Archibald?
Yes. Resolution number five.
Approving the sale of the vacant lot in 2512 Grashet Avenue for $250.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford, any discussion?
Just a comment, Mayor.
Councilmember Harris.
Was this property offered to the other adjacent property owner, Mrs. Wolf at 2512 Grashet?
Good evening, council. This property has been available. We were approached by the homeowner to the south. It is, the landlord to the north did not express any interest in the property. By the way, this property is an unbuildable site. It's 25 by 100. So it's just a small sliver, and it gives the property owner to the south a little bit more space.
Yep, my favorite. Thank you.
Any other questions? Clerk will take the roll.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Archibald?
Yes. Resolution number six.
Accepting the grant donation from the St. Clair County Community Foundation totaling $38,500 to provide a wheelchair swing in Lakeside Park and Pine Grove Park, and new playground equipment in Lincoln Park and 19th and Division Park.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
That was quick. Councilmember Ruiz, any discussion?
I just want to say, Mayor Protem, these wheelchair swings, it's hard to explain. They're literally like a whole moving platform. So you roll your wheelchair up on a platform, and the whole platform swings. In Stanton, we had in our downtown one of the only fullest ADA accessible parks in our community. It was all private donors. And one of the things we did right before I left is we put in this wheelchair swing. And I had never actually heard of it or seen of it, never even, until a male with a handicapped daughter came in and threw a picture on my desk and says, "I think we should do this." And I said, "Why not?" I was amazed at how far families with childrens with disabilities traveled to use this swing. I would go down in that park for lunch, and there'd be families there with their kids in this wheelchair swing. And I'd say, "Where are you from?" "Oh, we're from Saginaw. We're from Alma. We're from Grand Rapids. We came here all the way for this swing because our kids have never swung before." And so I did a quick cursory Google search, and there's not one of these swings in this region. And so for families with disabled children, we take swinging for granted, but it's something I've just, I've seen in the past. I'm very excited about this, and I'm also very grateful for the continued partnership with the foundation and for Nancy, who writes a lot of grants.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Is it motorized? I'm not sure.
No, it's, no, no, it's a legitimate question. They have, it's a platform that it's about four inches, five inches off the ground, and a ramp flips down. You flip back up in it, the ramp goes up. And it's got a chain so the kid is able to pull and swing himself, herself. And so it's something very unique. I've never seen it until we installed one, but you build it, and they will come. Where it gets out, the families who have disabled children often have support groups. They're very well-integrated and connected around the state, so it will get used. You'll be amazed. If in Little Stanton, we had that much use out of it, I'm sure here in Port Huron, our residents will use it.
Anyone else? Councilmember Ashford?
I would just like to join Mr. Freed in saying just how much the St. Clair County Community Foundation has made such a presence throughout our city and continue to do that. So we're very appreciative of their, what do you say, giving away money, you know? And it's just not the money. It's just the projects that they have elected to make a difference with. It's just great. So thank you. Thank you, Nancy, for interfacing on behalf of the city.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
I just think this could be another good project for Lakeside Park, you know, with all the other stuff we've done for the ADA down there. I think it's just one more key aspect to make it a better park.
Councilmember Amos.
I just want to thank, again, the Community Foundation for their hard efforts, and as well as Nancy. I'm probably getting on Nancy's nerves because I'm always talking about the parks and what they look like in our community, but I also get out and do the groundwork. And so I appreciate her and her efforts on really trying to improve our parks, to make our community better.
I would like to echo all of that. The Community Foundation's a great partner. Nancy, you've done a great job, and I'm really excited to see us be the first in the region to do something like this and to improve our parks beyond the cutting edge, and definitely to take care of that particular population. I would love to be there when it's up to see the first person get on, because I'm really curious how it works, too. So, thank you.
Okay, the clerk will take the roll.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Archibald?
Yes. Motion carries. Resolution number seven.
Approving the proposal with Errol Uniform to provide for uniform services for various city personnel.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Harris, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz, any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
This was a bid, or was this a quote? It was a question. Was this a bid or a quote?
I believe it was a proposal, correct?
A pro-
It was a proposal that each proposed, and they bid on quantities based on estimated amounts.
Oh, okay.
As part of their quotes. As part of their proposals was based on estimated amounts.
Okay. Was anybody else in on it except for Errol and Troy? Do we have anybody else? I beg your pardon? And how many of those were in Port Huron?
I think everyone. I think the local dry cleaners, all the local dry cleaners.
Oh, all the local dry cleaners, okay. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? The clerk will take the roll.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Archibald?
Yes. We have one announcement. Winter decorations in Lakeside Cemetery must be removed from the cemetery plots by March 31st. Removal of remaining items will begin on April 1st. Does anyone on council have anything else they would like to bring forward?
Mayor Archibald, I'd just like to make a comment tonight. A lot of you people didn't know him, but I was fortunate to know him. And I'd just like to express our condolences to the Ira Summers family. Ira Summers was a police officer here for many years, and just a gentleman and a police officer, and he'll be sadly missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just three things. First, how is the ethics thing going? Goal meeting?
Yes.
Is she working on that?
Yes, yep.
Okay. And two, I got two more things. And I know Councilmember Harris, Mr. Jawett got up and spoke about these two homes where they turned into our code enforcement. Was there a complaint? Did you put in anything?
I believe the first three houses on LaPierre Avenue in the 1300 block, one was tore down. The two next door to it are still standing, and one's starting to accumulate again.
Okay.
I'm sure they'll begin some attention tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, I want to make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to make sure when people come up and speak, we want to make sure that we respond in such a way. I know that the chief or whoever, department head, you're taking notes of it, but we, too, want to make sure that this is going to follow through, you know, you're following through. And then also let the people know, if you're going to come up and talk about something, that we have avenues that you could, before you get here, that you should call the city and complain, you know, you can do that, too. So we just want to know all these options are open. And then also the leaflets, I know Councilmember Harris and even myself had brought up about throwing the paper in the middle of the driveway. I hate getting out of my car, bending over, getting that thing. Almost fell on my head. You working on that, too? Yeah, do something about that. I thought, let me get this junk out.
I sympathize with that. Just the other day, I was on my porch, and there was this book that was yellow with all these numbers and addresses, and I didn't, I've never seen